Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience as we begin the zoning Board of Appeals meeting for March 31st. First item on our agenda is to review and sign bills for $672.60 to the Community Advocate for the March 31st, 2025 legal notices. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next is to review and accept meeting minutes for the April 26, 2021 meeting, as well as a February 25, 2025 meeting. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Moving on to our first six o'clock hearing, this is to hear and decide an appeal of the determination of the building inspector in accordance with Mass. General Law, Section 40A, Section 8, as filed by Attorney George Curtsi on behalf of Gerard Mansell, the personal rep of the estate of Patrick Mansell concerning the use of property located at 73 South Quincyman Ave. in the Residence B2 zoning district. Subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 38, Plot 086000. Can the appellant please step forward?
Surely. Sit here.
Have a seat, sure.
Thank you.
If you could state your name for the record and...
Surely. Thank you, ma'am chair. My name is George Curtsi. I'm the attorney. My office in West Boylston. I represent Jerry Mansell, who's the personal representative of his brother's estate, owner of the property at 73 South Quincyman. If I may, this is an appeal from a decision of the, a written decision from the Shrewsbury Building Inspector. The appeal is taken pursuant to General Law's 40A, Sections 8 and 15. I have already filed with the Board the appeal application memo of law, appendix of exhibits, and request for findings and rulings. Procedurally, this comes before the ZBA for this reason. In January of this year, the building inspector issued a written notice of violation under 40A Section 7. The crux of the order was basically that the property is located in a B2 zone, zoning district. The zoning bylaw allows one and two family residences. It does not allow multifamily or three-family uses. The actual use of the property is a three-family, and therefore, building inspector concluded that the use violates the zoning bylaw. This appeal followed, and we filed our memorandum explaining why we believe that the building inspector was, her decision was, her written decision was wrong. Legally, the issue, there's two issues. There's a factual issue, and there's a legal issue. Legally, if a use is, an actual use is in place and in operation, and has been commenced at the time zoning is adopted or amended, the use which previously was lawful may continue, continue on the premises after the zoning bylaw is adopted. That protection is found in the statute, Chapter 48, Section 6. Those historically have been called the grandfather provisions, or Section 6 is the grandfather provisions of the zoning act. And our argument before the Board is that the use of these premises at the time zoning was adopted was a three-family use, and therefore, it's a privileged, non-conforming use, privileged under Section 6. I don't think there's going to be much dispute relative to the legal standing or legal consequences of Section 6. That Section 6 basically provides the standard and identifies what the review of the Board is for determining whether or not a pre-existing use is privileged and protected under the zoning bylaw, zoning act. I'm happy to address it, but I believe that's, I think I've just recited what the legal standard is. If the property was properly being used as a three-family when zoning was adopted, that use may continue.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
This, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just...
No problem.
Just while we're on the subject. So Section 6, my understanding is that there's a but in there, that to the extent that the existing structure is changed in any way, so reconstruction, extension, or structural change of such structure, or any alteration of the structure afterwards, that's where the exception breaks down, right?
So there's, so the language of Section 6 is horrible, and the courts have talked about the language being very poorly drafted. But the Section 6 deals with uses and structures, and they deal with them differently, all right? So there's a distinction between the use and the structure. So the use is a protected use, that three-family use is protected, all right? Structural uses, all structural changes will come under the zoning act or under the building code, but those go, those deal with structural, structural changes. And under zoning, structural modifications, structural alterations can't be enforced against after 10 years. So there's a protection under a different section for the 10 years for struc, for structure, but uses are protected under the first paragraph of Section 6. There are exceptions that say if you do a expansion, alteration, modification, those will come under, all right? So let's say, for instance, I had a three-family, and I wanted to make it a four-family. Well, prior to zoning, if there were no zoning, I could do that, all right? But once the zoning comes in, I can't expand my three-family to a four-family without complying with zoning.
Right.
All right? And then there's, then there's an exception to the exception that says, but this doesn't apply to single and two-family users. So that second exception is off the table. And the, and the first exception is off the table because we're not doing any alterations or expansion of the prior three-family use. That use was in existence when zoning was adopted. We're not changing that use
Okay.
...to a four-family or anything else.
If I can restate, I just want to make sure I understand. So under Section 6, you've got two different exceptions in play, uses and then building. We'll just call it building to keep it simple.
Yep.
So any subsequent change in use is on one side, only deal with that. On the other side, any change in the structure is a separate issue. So what your position is, is it's been a three-family, it's never not been a three-family since prior to the adoption of
That's correct.
...passing, and therefore, it's grandfathered?
And therefore, the use as a three-family is a grandfathered use.
Was there ever a period after the adoption of zoning where it was not used as a three-family?
No.
So it's continuously been used?
It's been continuously used as a three-family, I've found, since the 1930s.
Okay. And then separately from that, there may have been structural changes, there may have been construction since the adoption of zoning. You're saying that that's separate, just a separate issue?
That's separate enforcement issues, and those, those kind of enforcements relative to structural changes, that has a 10-year
10-year
...statute limitations for enforcement.
Okay. And so to the extent that there isn't a building permit history here, going back through this time, that's sort of neither here nor there, is basically your position?
I'd suggest, no. I mean, I, there may be, there's a million reasons why permitting records don't exist. Number one, they may not have been required back when this was built in 1917, or after 1917. They may no longer exist, they may have been purged. Many towns have had, have loss of those records.
Yeah. You mentioned the 10-year look-back. Has there been any construction in the last 10 years that should have been permitted?
No, no.
Okay.
And my clients have owned the property during that entire time period. So it's not as though I'm anecdotally saying, listen, I'm not that, you know, prior owner didn't tell us this. My client, well, my client's, you know, Patrick Mansell deceased, but the family has owned that property since, for a period over 10 years.
Okay. All right. Sorry to interrupt, just figured we'd get that out of the way right there. Thank you.
So factually, we now look at issues of fact, because the legal issues talk about Section 6 and whether or not there are certain grandfather protections. Factually, we have to determine whether or not the building that has been used as a three-family prior to the advent of zoning in the town. My analysis started in 1967, because under the bylaw that I see online says it was adopted, first adopted in 67 and subsequently amended. There's a letter that I received just yesterday that was on my portal from the town suggesting that zoning was 1955.
Correct.
Either one works. I started in 67, 55's fine as well, because a lot of my data predates 55, which suggests that from, from at least the 1930s, this property has been used as a three-family. It appears to have been built sometime after 1913. And I say that because although the assessors' record has it indicate as being, I believe, 1880 or 1870, I found a subdivision plan in 1913 where they carved up all that land. No structures were shown on it. I suggest that it was probably built sometime after the 1913. Plus, the, it doesn't look like it's a Victorian-era structure. It looks like it was probably built in the teens or early twenties. The 1930 census, I'll start with that. The 1930 census, which is included in my appendix of exhibits, shows three families living in the property. Chamilla, La Prad, and De Rossi. It's handwritten, difficult to read, but that's the way I, I deciphered the penmanship. Three husbands, three wives, the La Prads had children, all right? The 1940 census for the property show three families, the Aubins, the Shapps, and the Hockinsons. Three husbands, three wives, both the Shapps and the Hockinson families had children. The 1950 census show three families living there, three husbands, three wives, and all three families have children. That's the 1950. And the 1960 census is not being released yet. That doesn't get released until 2033, I believe. So the most recent census available, 1950, predates 1955 adoption of zoning, is showing three families in the property for the 30 years prior to 1955. We've also provided two street directories. Street directories were a great resource. They don't publish them anymore, but they're old resources that identify by properties, and you're able to look up who's living where on these properties. We have the street directories from 38 and 56. Both those street directories evidence three families at this property for, for both 1938 and 1956. We looked at the voter rolls from 1950 and 54. The 1950's voter rolls show Mr. and Mrs. Urban, Mr. and Mrs. LaRusso, Mr. and Mrs. LeRivier. The 1956 show Mr. and Mrs. Wacus, Mr. and Mrs. Urban, Mr. and Mrs. LaRusso, and a Mr. LaPorea. So there are seven voters in 1956. We've, we've gone to the assessors' records to see what do they have as far back. And the oldest records that we could find from the assessors' record included Exhibit 3 is from the early 1970s. And in 1970s, they were identified as a multifamily, three kitchens at that time. And the 1970 records from the assessors' records. And that, and the assessors' records have never changed. It's been assessed as a three-family since then. It should be noted that this board in 19, in 1986 took up a variance application from the then-owner of the property. At that time, the property was owned by Vincent and Barbara Pesquale. They applied for a variance. They owned this property, and the other property next door, they wanted to cut off the back and create three lots. They had two lots, but they wanted to create a third lot and build a duplex. At that time, in front of the ZBA and making their pitch, they said, this is what we want to do. We have these two, two buildings. The chair, Mr. Jefferson at that time, noted that there were three-family building on this lot. And when asked by an ambassador questions about how is there a three-family there, he says existing uses are grandfathered in. Neither destructions comply now, they are, they are grandfathered in. So this, were taking up this property in 1986, determined that there was a grandfathered use of that property. They denied the variance to allow them to build the duplex on the back, but they recognized that the property was a grandfathered three-family. So the question in fact that the Board has is, was the use being, was the use of this property being used as a three-family when zoning was adopted? And I'd suggest there's tons of evidence that suggests that it was. This is exactly the kind of evidence that you get, very, very, I have never seen it, and it's probably extremely rare that you would have live testimony from somebody who owned and occupied the property in 1955. It's just that long ago. You're not going to find that kind of evidence. I will say that, that the owner of the property in 86 did testify to the Board at that time that since at least 1966, he knows the property was being used as a three-family. So the evidence is that it's been a three-family since 1930 with the census, through the 40s and 50s, that's with the census and the voting rolls, through the 60s, 70s, and 80s, when Mr. Jefferson, as the chair of the ZBA, noted that it was grandfathered, and up to the present date. The building inspector's letter in which she, she challenged the, the use says, based on the records of the building department, that it was a two-family. And yet, there's no records that say it's a two-family. And I know there may not be records that says it's a three-family there, but there's also no records that says it's a two-family. We do know what the zoning bylaw says, but there's no records that says it's a two-family. And this is exactly the kind of evidence that you kind of need and hope to have to evidence that the property was a privileged, grandfathered property. So respectfully, we suggest that the decision of January 25th should be vacated and overturned, and that the property be confirmed as a three-family. I would lastly say, just for the, for, it's in my brief, and I'd say it, there are four electric meters issued by the municipal light department on the property. There are three gas meters, all permitted through the town. So they were permitted there. It's been there forever as a three-family. I doubt that the town would have issued permits if it wasn't lawful when it was done. And we respectfully request that the, the Board vote to overturn the building inspection. And we respectfully request that the, the board vote to overturn the building inspection.
Thank you very much. Anything additionally, Louise, that you'd like to add?
No, I think he, you know, explained it fairly well. It is still the position of the building inspector that, you know, we're not, and the planning department, we're not necessarily denying that it's been used as a three family, but there's no permit history on file for it being a three family.
Can I speak first?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Curitze.
Good evening.
I want to address a threshold issue that you brought up in your memo, which is that you're challenging that the order was issued to the correct person. The order was issued to Frederick Abasciano. And in your memo, you reference a deed for 75 South Quinn Sigamond Avenue, which supports your position that your client owns 75 South Quinn Sigamond Avenue, but it doesn't support your position that he owns or they own 73. And I'm very confused by a deed. So, I, I took a look at the registry of deeds. There's a deed from November 14th, 2024, conveying the property from Mark Lee as successor trustee of the Van Croft Realty Nominee Trust to Mr. Abasciano, which I'm guessing is the deed that the building inspector used, the zoning enforcement officer used to issue the order. That deed is supported by two affidavits. There seems to be a history of flip-flopping between Mr. Abasciano and the trust over, over the decades. But I'd like to hear what you have to say. What is this confusion over 73 versus 75? Why does your client own this property?
The property is 73. So, in 2004, Abasciano owned the property in trust. So, there was a trustee. He had created a trust back in 2000. It was actually prior to 2004. But in 2004, the trust owned the property. It was a revocable trust. It was a, and Abasciano had the authority to remove a trustee. His sister was the trustee. He had the authority to remove his sister as trustee and appointed a substitute trustee. In 2000, in December 2004, recorded January 2005, a trust certificate was recorded. And that was from Mark Lee. And he says that Abasciano removed sister as trustee and appointed me. And I accept my trustee ship. I, I accept the position. 20 days later, Mark deeded the property from the trust to Fred individually. Fred then mortgaged the property individually, which was foreclosed. And that is the, that is the basis from the foreclosure sale. That was the basis of Moncel's acquisition.
But where's that deed?
Oh, the deed's on record. Back in 2000, back in 2, yeah, that, so the deed from Lee to Abasciano was, was recorded in 2005. Abasciano recorded a mortgage. That mortgage was for, is a foreclosure deed. And it was from the foreclosure deed that Moncel takes title. What happened in 2024 is title examiner didn't catch, didn't find the 2005 trustee certificate from Mark Lee where he accepted the appointment. So, they considered, the, the title company considered the mortgage as being void. Didn't have the authority to do it. It was still in trust. But in reality, it had already been conveyed to Abasciano with a trust certificate, but it wasn't caught because the registry of deeds didn't index it either against the property or against the, either against the property or against the trust. So, because they didn't catch it, they said to Moncel, you have to do confirmatory deeds to get these new deeds on that, that will put it back to where it was supposed to be in, in January of 2005. So, as far as titles, we're 100% confident we own the property. Abasciano's not claiming to own the property. We've indicated that, and by the way, although I know there's a threshold issue, I don't object to it. I do note in there that she sent it to Abasciano, but we're the owners of the property. Usually, building inspectors don't do title. They not, I mean, certainly it's not usually an issue that she's responsible to certify title. We own the, you know, we own the property and we're claiming as owners of the property.
But where, there should be another deed after November 14th, 2024, conveying it then from Abasciano to your clients. And I don't see that. Any title examiner who takes a look at the registry of deeds right now is going to say, your client does not own the property. Abasciano does.
Well, the, the title examiners are perfectly fine with the title now. So, there's obviously the doctrine, you know, of estoppel by deed. So, when he deeded, when he mortgaged that property, first of all, I don't think that documents were, were required. The curative documents in 2024 were not even required because Mark Lee had the authority in 2005 to convey the property to Abasciano individually. That, they missed the trustee certificate. So, if that conveyance was good in 2005, this subsequent recordings are themselves irrelevant.
But they're directly relevant because you're asking us to review the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer's order for, for errors. And the first error that you bring up is that it's not issued properly. But I don't see a deed. So, I understand you have an explanation, but there is no, she's not incorrect. She's correct in that the, the title, the record owner currently is Frederick Abasciano by this deed in November 2024. So, I guess I'm wondering about standing. I'm, this is not just an academic question. It's, it's a threshold issue.
We claimed to own the property. So, we're claiming as owners of the property, under the foreclosure deed, that we own the property under the foreclosure deed.
Do you have a copy of the foreclosure?
I can get, I can certainly provide that, but that's the record title. I mean, I, it's, you'll note that, I, I noted that it's not to us, but I also waived objection to it because we, we did get a copy of it and were able to timely appeal. And that's why we're here. It's.
Don't you think it goes to standing, though?
I think we have, but we're the ones saying we have title. I mean, unless the board's going to say, we don't own it, and now you're making a title decision that we don't own the property. And that's something that normally zoning boards.
We wouldn't be making a decision as to whether you own it. We're making a decision as to whether the, the order was properly issued.
I'm, I'm more at the, the substance of the order rather than the form. The sub, the substance of it, we're the owners of the property. She, the, the order says that it's not a lawful three family. That's what's on appeal. Not that we don't own the property. We, I mean, that's something that I'd have to.
The building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer says that Frederick Abasciano. But anyway, I, thank you for your input and I'll leave it to the other members to ask their questions.
Okay. Peter.
So, I, I share some of the concerns about the title piece and I, it sounds like it's pretty complicated. And so, I'm, I'll put that sort of to one side for the moment. On the merits, I, I appreciate the detective work that went into trying to find the factual underpinnings here. You mentioned things like the electric meters and the assessors' stuff. I think typically, we don't find that to be dispositive, though I understand it's part of the constellation of facts that you're presenting us. But I am finding the other information that you found going back prior to the 50s to be pretty convincing in terms of the fact that the use was in existence at the time that zoning was adopted. I haven't seen any evidence yet that says that at some point along the way, it was not used as a three family. And I tend to agree with, with your reading of Section Six as far as, and the bylaw, that there's uses that are in existence and then there's construction. And that subsequent construction doesn't necessarily mean that the prior use is extinguished, the grandfathering is extinguished. But I'm also, this is very complex and there's a lot in the air here. So, I'm very interested to hear what the other board members have to say.
Thank you.
I don't really have anything different than what you elaborated on, Peter. It seems like you've done very much research, a lot of research that is very relevant and I think proves as such that it hasn't changed hands. I think we're in a situation here where this was grandfathered in and because it hasn't changed from the use and there hasn't been change to the property, there hasn't been a situation where paperwork has been generated, which is why the town may not have records considering this. It seems like it's very much the same property since it was first constructed. San's cosmetic, but it doesn't seem like many structural changes have been made. So, I can see why there might not be documentation on it. So, I don't have anything further.
Dave.
I mostly echo what's already been said. I share Ann's concern and my own confusion about the title situation as well as Peter's assessment of the evidence that you've brought forth about the continued use as a three family. What I, what I find suspicious is the lack of the building permit record, which, as you've stated, may not apply because if something happened over 10 years ago, then it's, you know, too far gone. But I just want to say that I find it hard to believe that no work has been done on this property in any capacity since 1955 or 1975, when the bylaws were enacted or when the state building code came to be. So, but like you said, if, you know, if it happened older than 10 years ago, it doesn't count. So. That's all I have. No questions.
I would just echo that. I think the, the MLS listing is here in, in our file here and it, it doesn't look like a 1955 kitchen or, you know, or bathroom and that sort of thing. And so, the, the lack of a record on building permits is maybe concerning, though. Like you said, there's lots of reasons why that might be. But to the extent that we're separating uses from construction, you know, that there's no record of a, a change in use or anything like that at any point and you have all this factual evidence that it's been in use as a three family, it seemed to militate in favor of that.
I can say in the years that we've sat here, I've sat here, I don't ever recall anything quite this complicated, to be honest with you. Really. I mean, we've got title, we've got, you know, use, we've got grandfathering. We've got, you know, you've done very good research, leading me to believe that certainly 1930 and on, it's been a three family. So, your perspective or your standing is that no permits have been needed in the last 10 years? Is that correct?
That's what my understanding is, correct.
Okay. And currently, right now, today, there are three families living in the home?
I believe that one of the apartments, they've moved out when, when the process of selling it and new owners are going to occupy or whatever. But, you know, you'll notice that even between 30 to 40 and 40 to 50, in 50 to 56, people move in and out. This is not, very rarely is, this property does not appear to be somebody's lifetime residence. They, you know, they're tenants, they move in, they move out.
Right. I mean, I think I have enough information. Not sure that I have enough time, frankly, during a hearing like this to make a really informed decision. Luckily, we have some really good legal minds amongst us, which I appreciate at this point. And you, kudos to you. You've done a really great job of giving us information. So, I appreciate that. I think I'd like to, anybody else have anything else they want to talk to? Okay. So, I'm going to open it up. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Makes it even more complicated. We were hoping people would get up and give us more information that would really confuse us even more.
Anyone lived there in 1950?
Richard Ricker might know somebody. All right. Comedic relief's not going to help us in this matter. All right. So, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I have a point of order first, I guess. To the concerns regarding title, are those concerns enough that we, as a board, might want to continue to get more information or not? Because I think before we close the public hearing, we have to decide whether we're going to continue.
If we're looking for a unanimous vote, yes.
Okay.
So, you're concerned about that?
Yeah.
If I made.
But I'm ready, I'm ready to make a decision. I'm confident about my position.
Yeah.
If, if you're looking for additional title materials, I can supplement with those materials through the chair. Opinion from a title company, is that going to be suff, I mean, that's.
So, there isn't outstanding mortgage on the property. Is that correct?
No mortgage.
No mortgage.
Okay. So, do you have title insurance? Has there been a?
Oh, there was title insurance back when he, he got the property. He bought it, although we didn't put a claim in and there wasn't. The, the title came up during the proposed sale. So, the new, the buyer's counsel, not local, did a title, missed the, the 2005 trustee certificates and said, we need curative docs. Those curative docs were generated over the course of the next year, recorded. Goes back and, and they're saying, we're fine with title now because of the doctrine of estoppel by deed, that we're all set. The title, we, we, we did now what should have been done then. It's all set. I personally don't think there was a title problem ever. Even a year ago, when title, the, the buyer's title attorney picked up the case and said, we have a title problem. I said, you, you missed the certificate. I got involved afterwards and he says, well, we did all these curative docs. I was like, you didn't need those curative docs. The title certificate was fine. Mark Lee accepted the appointment January 4th, 2005. And I say, well, we didn't find that. That's what the, so that, all that was there. And if you take a look at those affidavits that you referred to, Fred Abasciano says, Mark Lee accepted his appointment. He has a copy of his acceptance. Well, I didn't need his affidavit to say that because there's actually a certificate in 2005 that says that.
But there should have been another deed recorded after the November transfer to Abasciano to your clients. And that's what I'm not seeing. And that's my problem with standing.
I see. But, but I, I don't, so that, that deed wasn't, so if Lee still had it, if, if the trust still had title in 2024, when, when Lee deeds the property into Abasciano, that bootstraps the Abasciano's mortgage because he granted, he conveyed a mortgage in 2005 or 2009. He conveyed a mortgage. So, that, that second deed is, would, would be, would stop him from denying that he conveyed the mortgage. It would confirm the mortgage. So, there's a, the doctrine of estoppel by deed is when you convey an interest in property that you don't own and you later acquire an interest in that property, you're stopped to deny that you, that you, the, the interest that you conveyed. So, that deed stops Abasciano from, from denying the mortgage, which was foreclosed and is the basis of our title.
And that would be the reason why there wouldn't need to be anything?
That why we would not need an additional deed.
Okay.
That makes sense.
And the, and the new buyer was fine with it. Everybody says it's fine. Peter Adams, title company, said, it was fine all along, but I'll do whatever you guys want.
So, I guess maybe another way, so do you waive the objection then about, about whether it was directed to the?
100%. I, I said that in my, my memo. Yeah, 100%. We're here now.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. The waiver does make a difference.
Yeah. It does it for me, I think.
Yep. Okay. All right. Do we have enough to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved. All right. Let's try this.
Well, so just quickly, is the mood of the board? I, I'm fine to. I got to look at the vote sheet here and see how we have it phrased. I would be inclined, based on the weight of the evidence in front of us, to reverse the determination of the building inspector. I, I would say that I have discomfort with that. I wish the building inspector was here. I'd be interested to hear her side, but based on the information that's in front of us at this hearing, I think I, I think the weight of the evidence is there. So.
Can I make a point? The, the order is a combined building code order and zoning order. So, if we're going to make a determination, if we could just restrict that as to the zoning issues within the order. Optimally, there would be two separate orders.
Right.
But we don't want to overturn, we don't have the authority to overturn the building code.
I think that's right. Okay. Um, I can, I can make a motion if the board's, okay?
Give it a try and see.
All right. So, I move to reverse the determination of the building inspector with respect to, what's the proper terminology? The. The grandfathered use of the property at 73 South Consigamond Avenue in the Residence B2 District. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Second. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to also say, it really was very complicated. You did a good job of representing your client.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. Next appeal. Hear the appeal of Giovanni Barbosa Sonniget, 12 Concord Road, Shrewsbury, Mass. For a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6, excuse me, Section 7, Table 2, to construct an addition 14.6 feet from the side yard setback where 20 feet is required upon property located at 12 Concord Road in the Residence A zoning district. Subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 26, Plot 110058. Could I ask the appellant to please step forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you grab a chair, pull it up? Thank you. You could state your name for the record, please.
Giovanni Barbosa Sonniget.
Claudia Elias, just a translator for you.
Right.
Evan Ribero.
Hey.
So, I guess the issue is the setback. So, when Giovanni initially purchased the property, he obtained an old plot plan or as-built. And the side lot where he wants to build the addition shows a different dimension. And upon ordering a survey, the initial survey actually had listed that the setback was 10-foot, where then I, and he obtained that from documents that he found online by the bylaws of Shrewsbury, which were incorrect. And then I brought up the attention, I brought that to the attention, where he went back into Shrewsbury bylaws and found the correct setback for that zoning district. So, he's looked at other options about where to place this addition, and realistically, he would be breaking any kind of setback issues. So, if he placed it in the back, he'd be, I guess, he wouldn't have that rear setback that he would need to. And on top of that, he would be disturbing permeable land. Whereas if he just placed it where it is as of now, it's just going on a driveway, and he wouldn't have to disturb any of the soil or... So. He's stating if you were to measure, right now, it does go by what the old plot plan says, which is 39-foot. But with today's technology, it's a lot more precise, and it's different than what he has.
Does he have a measured plot plan that devias from our, the information that we have? Is that what you're representing, or...
No, so I think the plot plan that he has is actually something that he picked up when he purchased the house from the town of Shrewsbury. And it's just, it doesn't match with what's today's plot plan that he got.
Okay. All right. Louise, any other information?
No, I just would like to maybe dig into the hardship maybe a little bit more, if the applicant can. I know they state in their application, you know, they would be impeding on any, you know, setback, wherever they put an addition, and that financial is as well. But, you know, topography, shape, you know, things like that. I would just like to hear a little bit more.
Yep. Got it. Peter?
Yeah, same. So, under our bylaw, to get a variance, and under the statute, there needs to be something unique about the soil, the shape, or the topography, so the slope typically, of the land, or about the existing structures on the land, that enforcing the bylaw as written would impose an undue hardship on the applicant. It sounds like, what I'm hearing from you in terms of what your hardship is, is that based on the location of the existing dwelling, there's just not really anywhere else you could put it that wouldn't infringe?
Correct.
I think the only thing about that that might not be sufficient under our rules is that it looks like most of the homes in the neighborhood would have the same issue. And so, as far as it being unique, it's not as clearly unique. I am noticing on the measured drawing that there is some variation in slope in the yard, and so, I don't know. Like Louise said, I'd be interested to hear what else you have to say about the hardship.
So, the rear, in the rear, it's actually caved in. Whereas if it rains a lot, water takes days to kind of seep into the soil. So, it's, I wouldn't say it's wetlands, but he definitely has some drainage issues in the backyard.
And so, I, looking on the plot plan, the updated plot plan, the building envelope, you know, where you can build without having to come before us is outlined. It looks like, I think it's purple, I'm colorblind, I think it's purple.
Yes, yeah.
There is an area there that's pretty substantial, where it looks like there's stairs down from the deck, and a rectangle there where it looks like an addition could go. That would be within the setbacks. I'm just curious if there's a reason why that wouldn't work.
So, that would encroach into that issue where they get a lot of water, and it would create a setback issue in the rear, where I think it's required 40-foot? Or is it 30?
Forty, but I, yeah. And again, it's hard to say on a plan.
Yeah.
If you moved that red box down into where the pink or purple box is, does that work? But, so, okay, that's helpful for me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It wouldn't be, I mean, it would give them a rear setback issue. It wouldn't be much, kind of like the side issue, I think, is like 5'4". It would be relatively about the same, if you were to do that addition in the back.
So, one way or the other, in other words?
Yeah.
You're going to have potentially an issue? Okay. That makes sense.
Okay. Anne?
Nothing at this time.
And to your point, Peter, about relocating it, based on the layout of the interior of the home, I think if you do move it kind of in that corner that I think you're seeing back there, you do have to rearrange more of the interior, based on where your kitchen is, bathroom, there is a bedroom there. And you would be creating more hardscape, and I think a structure that wouldn't be prototypical to what the neighborhood is. So, I, 5 and 1/2 feet doesn't bother me too much. It's a little bit more than what we typically deal with. I don't think you can really shrink the garage much more, and I think it makes sense where it is, kind of at that den-end hallway, based on the interior of the structure.
I don't have much else to add, except for echoing everything that's already been said. To put on top of that, it does appear in the neighborhood, there are a multitude of homes that also have garages on the side. So, adding a garage does not seem like it would add or change the nature or the feel of the neighborhood. Additionally, I can see from, you know, the plans and from the Google Map aerial view, that there is a paved area where you're driving. So, cars that would be in the driveway would be in the garage. So, I don't see any additional, you know, traffic or noise from traffic. Those are the only comments I have.
Okay. Right. I have really nothing else to add. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I get a motion? Sir, can you step forward? Use the microphone if you could, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kieran. So, we live in House 10 Concord Road. This is our neighbor, you know, the tall Concord Road. So, the garage they're planning to build is coming to, close to our living room, you know, living area. So, as far as they are following the zoning rules, 5 and 1/2 feet, I mean, to build the garage. So, you are okay with that? Because coming 10 feet, that is too close to my house. So, I'm not sure about it. So, either we have to say yes, or if we say no, is that they're going to stop it or want to continue this?
We take in all the information that we hear at the public hearing, and we make a determination based on the facts that we have in front of us?
Yeah.
So, are you the abutter? You live next door?
Yeah.
I see. What number, Concord?
10 Concord.
You're a 10, okay. So, if we approved their appeal, that would mean that they would be able to go forward with the plans that they had. And as they are representing, the addition would be 14.6 feet from the property line, where our bylaws state that it needs to be 20 feet from the property line. So, they're short by 7?
Yeah.
7 feet or so.
So, that means they have to extend the driveway too, right, at the same time?
Can you...
They have to extend the driveway, the driveway?
Is there any intention on extending the driveway?
No, it would just, it would end up shortening the driveway, actually.
So, the driveway's going to get shorter, and it's going to be taken over by the addition of the house?
Okay.
Vijay, the only question I would have is, are they going to have the garage face exactly like how it is now and just pulling it out, or are they changing the configuration?
Do I answer this directly to her?
Through the, through the, through...
So, as of right now, the garage is on the side of the house, and it would be changed, and it would actually be facing the street.
Ah, okay.
So, we would just drive straight in and out.
Gotcha. Okay. That was our question.
That satisfy your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could step forward, please?
My name's Frank Josbacher. I'm at 7 Concord Road, diagonally across Neighbors Talk. And one of the items that's in discussion is that there would be a second floor to this particular structure. And I'm wondering whether there would be windows facing the neighbor for that particular addition.
On the number 10 side?
On the number 10 side, correct.
Could you...
So, there weren't any plans for windows on the side, but for two additional windows on the front?
Above the garage?
Correct.
So, there wouldn't be any cross-viewing between the neighbors?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Hey, we have a question from the board.
Just a quick question. I'm looking on Google Earth, and it shows that there's some pretty tall foliage between 12 and 10. Is it anticipated that that will remain, or are you going to take that?
So, that was actually already removed on a different permit that has been recently closed.
Okay. Never mind.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve a variance under Section 7, Table 2, to construct an addition 14 and 6 tenths feet from the side yard setback where 20 feet is required at 12 Concord Road, Residence A District.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So, moved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Moving right along. Next hearing, this is to hear the appeal of Danielle Dodakian, 37 Vega Drive, Shrewsbury, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 6B, Table 2, to construct a porch to the front of the house 21.3 feet from the front yard setback where 30 feet is required, and a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7B, Table 2, to construct a two-car garage and add a second-floor addition above to the side of the house 1 foot, 1.9 feet from the side yard setback where 10 feet is required upon property located at 37 Vega Drive in the Residence B2 zoning district. Subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 16, Plot 166000. Can I ask the applicant to step forward, please?
Hi.
Good evening. If you could state your name for the record, please?
Danielle Dodakian. And this is my husband, Gary Dodakian.
Hi.
Welcome. All right, so tell us what you're planning on doing, please.
Yeah, so we are planning on, in addition, to add a second floor to our house, which would include a two-car garage on the side and a porch in the front to accommodate the, since we've moved in there, we've had two kids, we have a three-year-old and a one-year-old, so that our family has grown, and so, we're looking to make that house our forever house, so.
I'm a lifetime Shrewsbury resident. I live, I've lived in this section of Shrewsbury my whole life, up Camelot Drive. My parents still live there. I went to Shrewsbury Public Schools. I graduated in 2006. I moved into this house in 2013. Met my beautiful love life. She moved in with me. And, you know, we've really overwhelmed this house so far with the two kids, the toys, the toys outside, right? So, the need for this addition is for space. We don't have much space right now with the one bathroom and three bedrooms, and no downstairs room for anything in the basement. We're looking to have a garage and room above, so that we can, you know, grow into this house long-term and make this our forever house. So, I have no intention of moving this. The only feasible way to stay in Shrewsbury in this location for us.
Okay. Louise, anything?
May I, yeah. So, the only note I will make is that on the application, it was, and how it was advertised, was special permits for both, and the first was special permit to Section 7, Table 2, but it should have been special permit from Section 4B. But since the special permit and the meat of, you know, the request of what the appellant is proposing to do is all there, and it was just the wrong section of the zoning bylaw, it is perfectly acceptable to be, to move forward and to hear this appeal.
Do we need to get any acceptance from them, or is this just...
I don't think so.
Calling it into the record?
No, yeah, I was just putting it, you know, into the record.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Peter?
Sure. So, you got a little bit of a preview, I guess, from the last hearing about what's required for variance. We typically look at there being something unique about the shape, the topography, or the soil, or the existing structures. And so, I'd preface by saying, also grew up here, came back here to start a family, and I think, like many people in town, feeling the difficulty of trying to find a way to grow into a home here and remain here, as opposed to having to look somewhere else and leave the town that you've invested so much of your lives into. So, a lot of sympathy for your situation from that.
Thank you.
I think the thing that I'm hung up on, so I don't really have an issue with the special permit. I think a porch, you're not significantly increasing the non-conformity, and it's not, my understanding is it's not enclosed. It's like an open porch.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, that, I don't think that detracts from the spirit of the bylaw. The place where I get a little bit stuck is the 1.9 feet from the side yard. So, variances, we're allowed to do variances under the law when you have one of those unique hardships, but it's also something that's not going to contravene the purpose of the bylaw. Purpose of the bylaw there is to keep stuff from being too close to the property line.
Yeah.
And 1.9 feet is really close to the property line.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I think that's the piece. I'd be interested to hear more about the justification for the variance, and also just, looking at your plot plan here, there does appear to be a fair amount of space in the back. And I don't know if you thought about, for the proposed, what's listed here as proposed garage and crawl space, shifting that behind the house, where you might be able to be further than 1.9 feet from the side yard? But that's, for me, would be the legal stumbling block here.
Right.
Yeah. So, we did talk about pushing the garage further back. The property is, it's a .29 acre, so it's not that, that would take up a big chunk of the backyard. And we want to keep, wanted to keep some of our yard, and so, pushing it back there, I think that would encroach on the back variance, not as much. But, so we did think about that. Though we thought that it would make more sense to not have it, like, take up the whole back of the house.
Yeah, and like we've heard before, so if you move that over, then you're blocking your whole kitchen, right? And you have to redesign the house, essentially, so.
Yeah. And as I mentioned earlier, we do, we do look at the location of existing structures. So, the fact that the house is where it is is relevant.
Our driveway kind of goes like, like, close up to the, maybe, it's a little bit more, but it's kind of close up to the grass.
To the side, yeah.
The thing is, yeah.
And so, I think that's, the rub is that ideally, we'd have something that was, that was sort of unique about your situation in comparison to the other homes in the neighborhood? Is there anything that sort of jumps to mind there that we could use as a justification?
Sure. It's not centered on the lot, either. That's the other issue. And then, because we also looked at putting it on the other side of the house. And then on, because we also looked at putting it on the other side of the house.
Mm-hmm.
Problem there is we have drainage there, water there, and it's topography. So the way they built these lots in nineteen fifty-seven or whatever is they built up on a mound, basically, then they go down, and that's where we are.
Right.
So we're one of the only people that get water. Well, actually, that's not true. There is water in the neighborhood. Our neighbors across the street have water. And where we go, our pump goes out that way, but that's the low point in the basement also for where it pumps out.
Yeah.
Also, it top, topography drops off about ten, not even ten feet, eight feet to the left of the house. So then your garage is offset essentially and won't be possible or feasible.
And I can see the slope even just looking at it on Google Earth.
And then also, there's the layout of the house also. If we were to put the garage on the other side of the house, we'd have to redo our kitchen, bathroom, plumbing, everything.
The garage is going to go into the bedrooms or something?
Correct.
Um, ki- into the kitchen.
Into the kitchen?
Yeah.
Okay.
The bedrooms are on like the opposite side.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the, the difficult, I'll, just to be candid, I think two feet is like really tight.
Yeah.
And I think that's tough. I'd be open to hearing if there's, if there's anything else that, that you can do, but I don't want to monopolize and let other people ask their questions.
Yep. And I will state that I, we're very close with our neighbors to our right. They're unbelievable people. They have no objection to it.
That's helpful.
Anne?
Is there any vegetation on the left side that would provide any screening for the neighbors on that side from the new addition?
There is none. Are you, like, if you're facing?
Facing it, like, to, the addition's going to be essentially to the left, right? Which is, sorry, it's to the right.
Yeah.
So sorry, I meant right.
There is no vegetation.
There's nothing between our houses, no?
No. We, we, we're, no, we like to keep an open border policy with our neighbors, so there's no, no vegetation.
Okay.
So.
Okay, Kevin?
No, I don't think I have anything else to add. Um, like has been said before, that one point nine is tough, but to your point, the other side, um, does have a significant drop-off, um, which I think then becomes, um, quite looming for your neighbor. It's really a damned if you do, damned if you don't on either side. Um, and to my point on the last project about putting it in the back and now the house looks out of character for the neighborhood and layout then becomes an issue even though you're adding a second floor on. Um, I don't know what else you do, so, um, I don't have any other questions for you.
David?
Similar to the last appeal, um, my questions are going to be about the traffic and the cars. I see from, uh, Google Earth, you've got three vehicles in a, in a line, or at least maybe they're not all, always there, but you have a, a single file driveway.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it looks like the proposed new garage is a two-car but single-door garage?
Yeah.
We have two cars.
Oversized. It'd be probably, it's not a full two-car. It'd be an oversized. We had to come down and we just don't want to lose any more space.
Cause if, yeah.
Standpoint.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's interesting, because the, as, as, as has been discussed, the, the one point, whatever, the less than two feet of, of relief, uh, is, is difficult. Um, and so if you say it's a one-car garage, but it's oversized, you know, is there a consideration that could be made to make it a one-car garage that's regular-sized to bring?
Well, it's twenty, yeah, it's twenty, a sta- I think the standard two-car garage is like twenty-four feet. Um, so this is twenty-two feet, so I think it could fit the two cars. It's just tighter than the standard size.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that. That wasn't super clear.
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, no, it's fine. The, yeah, and it seems like you have two vehicles, so it's not like you're adding a garage. You can add more vehicles.
No.
So no increase in noise from traffic. And, uh, everything that's been about lot size, structural location, and topography has already been said, so I have no more comments.
And just to be clear, if you were to put the addition anywhere else, it would require reconfiguring the entire inside of the house. So this was done so that you didn't have to do that additional reconfiguration of the interior of your home?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
For keeping the kitchen the way it is, bathroom, like that.
Got it. Okay. All right, I think I'd like to hear any comments. Um, is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, if you could step forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Um, Denise Rodman Crocker. I live right across the street on, at thirty-four Vega Drive. We, um, had this same issue that we presented in two thousand and eighteen to the zoning board and you graciously granted us the, uh, pre-existing, non-conforming nature of our lots in the same exact way. Um, we ran up against the house to our right, just like they would.
Was it one, was it one?
So it's?
One and a half feet from your?
It's about three.
Okay.
All right. So, and you could check the records on that.
Sure. Yeah, sorry, you said number?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, okay.
Yeah, we built it on the same foundation, yes. So we support this.
It's a beautiful house.
Oh, thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
I got my inspiration of the.
Yeah, she's, you know, it's really the neighbors right there, very encouraging, and everyone on the cul-de-sac there has been, you know, very supportive of this, so. And that's why we want to stay also, right? You, you can, you know, move, but you can't bring your neighbors with you, right? So.
Yeah, they say that.
Yeah.
Okay, any, anyone else wishes to be heard? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I think less than two feet is tough, but I think it's, I think there are justifications here, um, so I'm going to take a swing at it. I move to approve a special permit to construct a porch to the front of the house twenty-one and three tenths feet from the front yard setback where thirty feet is required in a variance, oh, sorry, under section four B zoning bylaw. And I move to approve a variance under section seven B, table two, to construct a two-car garage and add a second floor addition above to the side of the house, one foot and nine tenths feet from the side yard setback where ten feet is required at thirty-seven Vega Drive in the Residence B one district.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, uh, this is a request for continuation to hear the appeal of Jeremiah Galant, forty-two Maple Street, Paxton, for a, for two special permits to Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, section s- six, table one, for an in-law apartment, and section seven, table two, to build an addition thirty-seven feet from the front yard setback where fifty feet is required on a pre-existing, non-conforming dwelling upon property located at Twenty Brook Street in the Rural A zoning district. Subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate forty-three, plot zero-three-one, zero, zero, zero. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to continue the hearing to, what's the next date?
April twenty-eighth.
April twenty-eighth at six P M.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, uh, next up is to hear the appeal of Best Auto of seven fifty-three Grafton Street, Shrewsbury, Mass, for an amendment to a previously approved variance from nineteen eighty-four as recorded in book eighty-five, eighty-two, page twenty-four, to allow for overnight outside storage of vehicles on property located at seven fifty-three Grafton Street in the Rural B zoning district. Some, subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate fifty-four, plot zero-four-five, zero, zero, zero. Good evening. State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, uh, Madam Chair and members of the board. Um, may I please abate? My name is Richard Ricker, and I know you know where I'm from, but I'm, my office is at eleven Maple Avenue, uh, here in Shrewsbury. Um, I'm here with Michael Hank, who is the, um, principal of, of the, um, realty company that owns this property and, and he is the applicant. He also operates, uh, Best Auto, which is the, um, collision center located on this property. This, this, um, property has been used in this fashion since nineteen eighty-four, uh, which was the time of the, the first variance of many on this property. Um, if you look at the, um, records, um, uh, there was, uh, variances in eighty-four, eighty-six, eighty-nine, ninety-seven. That's what I can count, and there was at least one, uh, court judgment that, um, uh, established and, and determined that the hardship that was utilized in the nineteen eighty-four, um, um, variance was, um, accepted and appropriate. Uh, that was an agreement for judgment that was, uh, filed and accepted in, uh, the Superior Court, um, in Worcester. And I have a copy of that judgment if you wanted to see it, um, but it is of record. This, uh, request is, uh, to ask for an adjustment, uh, to, uh, one of the requirements, uh, which dates back to the original nineteen eighty-four, um, variance. Michael, uh, purchased, uh, this property in two thousand and six and, uh, has been operating it, um, continuously since then. Uh, he, um, will tell you, but I'll tell you for him, uh, that, um, he was not aware of the, um, various stipulations of all the various, um, um, variance decisions, um, and one of which is, uh, the stipulation that there'd be no outside parking at night of vehicles. That has been apparently overlooked for many years, um, both by, um, the operators prior to him. Uh, it is, it is something that he was not aware of, uh, frankly, until October of twenty twenty-four, when, um, the building department sent out, as they did to all, um, license holders, uh, they sent out, uh, police officers to count vehicles, uh, in various, uh, entities throughout to- throughout town to determine whether there were, in fact, any issues with, uh, parking, overnight parking, or things of that nature. In the case of auto dealers, it was the number of cars that they had. Um, so in this particular case, it was brought to the town's attention. Uh, Mr. Hank's, uh, did get a letter. Um, we, um, his counsel at that time immediately contacted the, um, town manager. Um, I was hired shortly thereafter. Basically, um, uh, we've worked with the town manager's office uh, to try to, um, work out a plan that we hope would be acceptable to you. The plan now, uh, consists of, you have the plan. Uh, you can see that, um, he would, and he has been actually parking the vehicles to the rear of, of the second building on the property, uh, away from Grafton Street. And, uh, he plans to put a, if you, uh, agree with this plan, he, uh, plans to put a gate and a fence um, uh, across the area where that building is situated, so that that area will be further blocked from Grafton Street. I would suggest to you that, um, this is an appropriate, um, thing for this type of business. And then as the courts and the, uh, previous, uh, variances have noted, uh, this property originally was a gas station when, when, um, uh, Grafton Street was the highway and, um, before one forty was, was driven in. And as such, it started, it, it was, it was a gas station. It was elongated. Uh, you have an elongated lot. Um, you have a, um, a zone line that, um, barely, um, touches the corner of the lot, but it does dissect the lot, uh, barely. Uh, all of those things were noted by the previous boards and, uh, by the Superior Court Agreement for Judgment as, uh, an appropriate, um, hardship designation in order to move forward with his, uh, or with the previous, um, variance requests. It should be also noted that, um, this is incidental to this lot. I mean, this, um, he, i- it is a lot that's basically on Grafton Street. Um, you've got a porch of metals across the street. Um, you've got residential up and down the street. Um, you do have, um, uh, Flynn's Truck Plaza has a, has a parking lot directly to the rear, which, which a- actually abuts, uh, the area where we're talking about parking the vehicles to the rear of his property. So that will be a budding, uh, commercially-zoned property and commercially-used property. That is a parking lot that is used by Flynn's Truck Plaza for the parking of their, uh, of their customers' trailers and, and tractors, uh, in many cases overnight. Um, the, um, it, it, I would respectfully suggest that, um, this does not, um, derogate from the intent of the bylaw inasmuch as you're right there on the edge of the commercial zone. You, um, it's been there for a long time. It's been, it was a gas station previously even before zoning. Um, so, um, it's, it's just a longstanding use on a, on a long, narrow lot, um, and a, and a long, narrow building, uh, all of which, uh, again constitutes the hardship that we're dealing with here. I would, uh, suggest to you that, um, in order for this type of business to, to stay in business, they have to have vehicles stay there for sometimes short, sometimes lengthier periods of time because of the nature of the business itself now. Insurance inspections by, uh, insurance investigators and, and inspectors for the various repairs and, and the people that, and, you know, investigate these things and inspect the vehicles. Uh, they have to come at various times. Um, you've got a wait for parts. I don't need to tell you uh, that the wait for parts is probably going to get longer. Um, and that certainly is a, is a, uh, concern, uh, that leads to the need to keep vehicles on-site. He does employ twelve people in Shrewsbury, um, and it's a, it's a good, solid business. Uh, his, um, neighbors, to my knowledge, are happy with him. Um, I've, I've heard from a couple of them at least, um, that, and, and, uh, I know that he has as well, that, um, um, we know of nobody that would complain about the way he's operated this business. There's been a good, happy existence there. And, um, I would suggest to you that if we are allowed to park these vehicles, uh, outside as requested and as shown on that plan, uh, that it would certainly, uh, go towards the issue of nuisance and, and the issue of, of avoiding a nuisance and, not that there has been one, but, um, it makes it more palatable. It makes it, makes it better. It makes it neater at night, and I think that betters the neighborhood. It betters the overall circumstances. And it's, it makes the whole situation better. So with that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Louise, anything additional to add?
No.
Okay. Peter?
Um, thank you, uh, for that. That was very helpful. Um, just a couple of questions. One, is the, is the intention to pave that area back there? It appears to be unpaved at the moment.
No.
No? Okay. But there is an intention to fence it and provide a gate a- across the rear parking area?
Yes.
Um.
Uh, you know, that's not to say that at some stage down the right, and down the line, it may be paved.
Mm-hmm.
Um, right now, the intention is not to, but, um, in light of the fact that there will be some stormwater issues there, it's some
This is the kind of thing I've.
Then, then he's going to have to deal with the ramifications.
Yeah, this, the thing that gives me pause is I see that, um, Bama Brook runs right adjacent to the property. I don't know if you're within wetland buffer zone or anything like that there, but runoff or if there's any engine oil or anything like that that goes directly into the ground, could end up in the brook and in the groundwater. So paving, I think, would be preferable, but that's for the con-con, so I'm all set.
And I, and I would note that right now it's a construction area, like you can't imagine, you, if you've been there, it's, it's incredible, the machines and everything.
A lot happening?
All over the place.
Yeah.
Anne?
Mr. Ricker, could you tell us a little bit more about the fence, how tall it's going to be, whether it'll be, you know, opaque, you know, construction materials?
Can I let Michael tell you?
Sure.
Basically, what we're looking at is a wooden slatted fence, a swing-away fence, um, giving us access to, you know, to the backyard and keeping everything in the front. Uh, well, you know, to the, in, in the front of the garage, in front of the rear, out of view of everybody else is what it comes down to. I have hired an engineer, um, you know, we're thinking of, again, if everything is approved.
Would it be six feet?
What's that?
Would it be a six-foot fence?
Six feet high? Yes.
Yeah.
The, um, you know, just basically to keep, keep everything away from the neighbors is what it comes down to.
And will it enclose the entire back or is it just like in the front?
Only in the front.
In, uh, behind that second building or in front of the second?
Uh, behind the second building is, is Flynn's parking lot is what it comes down to. So what would happen is, directly behind the actual shop, it, it's almost a, a, a run-around is what it comes down to. What we would like to do is What we would like to do is to continue to enter that area from behind the shop or through the gated area, but still have access through the shop because there's back doors to the shop, overhead doors and things like that, that we're bringing cars inside and out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the answer is, you'd only have the gate and no fence going further back. He does own the property next door, and then the other property is, as Mr. Mulcahy has pointed out, it's a wooded area that basically goes quite a distance before it gets to Sherri Moranis' Community Animal Hospital, and she owns that property.
I don't have anything.
My comments, we're going to just echo what Peter had said about the parking area being paved. This is a, you know, a repair facility for cars that have been, you know, you can conceive they have been in accidents, and that fluids may be leaking, and there is a brook there. So I just wanted to echo the concerns about having an auto repair facility with, you know, potential runoff into waterways.
If I can address that.
Right ahead.
You know, he has operated since two thousand and six, and he is, I'm telling you right now, he is diligent. If there's a vehicle that has the kind of damage that would cause leakage, he wouldn't be parking it out there. Right? This is not the kind of, that, it's those lesser repairs that cause the problems in this type of business because you end up with vehicles that are waiting for parts, and maybe a headlight out or, you know, a front fender or something like that. So, he has had DEP inspections, he does go through that stuff. So, I would assume that if, as we move forward and as he moves forward, then if paving is an option and something that needs to be done, it'll be done.
That's very reassuring, thank you. No further comments.
So, my question, I'm going to go back to the fence question. I just know that making that turn can be tough. From Clues, am I, so if you come...
Yes.
Right?
Yep, coming out of Clues onto Grafton.
Correct.
There's a stop sign, there's a stop sign there.
Well, there is, but...
That kind of crosses over to his front garage door.
Right.
Right.
So is the fence going to impact your sight views?
No.
Okay.
No, the fence, if I could, can I?
Actually, I'm confused now about the fence. Is it at the waist there? It's in between? There it is. Okay.
Oh, oh.
So it's well off the property. All the parking will be back here.
Okay. When we say the front, we mean the front of that garage?
The front of the garage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right here.
Okay.
But that is reassuring. Okay, thank you for that. Thank you. I don't have any.
Just one last question?
Yes.
Would there be any objection to conditioning the granting of this on the idea that it would be screened by the fence and the gate? Sounds like you're planning to do that.
Oh, no, absolutely not. We planned on it, that's why we have it on the plan.
Okay.
Absolutely not, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a reminder, there are some waivers on this as well.
Right.
Yes.
All right. This is a public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? You could step forward, please?
Hi. My name's Marcyle Holden, I live at seven eight two Grafton Street, and I am not in favor of allowing this amendment. I grew up there, and I remember when this was proposed for Leo Shinette, who lived in the house that has now been torn down right next door, and he wanted to put a garage in so that he could work on cars. All the neighbors supported him because he grew up in that area, and they said yes, with stipulations. One was that the cars were to be put in overnight, they were not to be left out. There were different stipulations, but they wanted to allow a neighborhood kid to get ahead, so that happened. Since then, it has been sold. But at the same time, what I'm hearing here is going to get away from that intent and that purpose of why that was allowed. There is a babbling little brook which is behind it. Right now, the sewer system is being brought down, that's all the construction that you're hearing about on Clue Street, that's going to be, I think, a year project. In place is the fencing in order for them not to get anything into that brook. That brook goes down under one forty and into Window Pond. People in that area do have well water, myself included, I have well water. So things such as allowing overnight storage, allowing those cars to go more into the back, I think that does need addressing as well. The other part of this, because we're straying from the purpose and intent, how this originally came about, is, I understand there's an active license two for a used car dealership to go into this location as well. It's active right now. So, to me, when I look at this entire thing, I look at, knowing Leo, I grew up there, I don't remember a gas station, I was there quite a while, my father was there, I don't remember anything like that, I remember a house, I delivered papers, I remember delivering him to the house where his parents lived, which has now been ripped down, I remember old barns, but I, and I remember the brook which has always been there, but I do not remember ever a gas station or any type of a business there, that must have been quite some time ago, and it was a variance allowing a young guy to get ahead and work on cars. This is morphing into something different with fences and cars being left out that are destroyed. Right now, they're not left out, they're doing a great job of it. No one's had to complain because they haven't been left out. But with now going for a license two in order to start a used car dealership because they bought the property and ripped the house down, I'm thinking this whole thing is swaying into something much different than what's being addressed here. I think that we're not addressing the entire situation. And right now, because of Market Basket, the traffic on Grafton Street as a cut-through has become increasingly, the volume's increasing unbelievably. I have talked to the police, they did put up the little signs and they counted cars, it's quite, quite different than when I lived there. Lot of traffic, lot of cut-through. There's also a lot of traffic for the signals between Route twenty going this way down to Market Basket and up, that's why the cut-through through Grafton Street. Also, a lot more people live in Grafton, that's developing. So there's all this cut-through happening on that one little individual street. The other thing I have noticed as well, besides having the police do that little, they put up the thing, do the speed limit, count the cars, it's all on record, they did it last year, is trucks, if you read the signs, trucks are not allowed on that road, there's a weight limit. So this goes into morphing this into something that, there was never the intent, it was never the purpose. It was to allow some young guy, all the neighbors knew him, my mom was voted on it, my dad voted on it, neighbors voted on it, and now it's changing completely. There was never twelve guys when it started out, never twelve people. And I know in that neighborhood, next door is Leo's brother, who lives right next door, right down from there, there's a bunch of houses where Flynn had a trotter track where he used to trot the horses around, there's five houses there. Across the street is Orchard Meadows, houses all the way down, my house is right over there. This is a residential area, predominantly residential. This will be an eyesight and unsightly, this will take away from my property value and many others. This is not what the intent or the purpose was when this originated in nineteen eighty-four with that variance, that his neighbors allowed him to have. Why Leo sold it? He got cancer, and he had to sell. Since then, it's been sold several times. So this is way off track, and I think with going for a license, which is active right now for used cars, that needs to be on the table as well, because this is one property. And both properties have been bought with that in mind, I'm sure, or somewhere down the road. It's very clear, it's in the books, it's active, if you look it up right now, I can even show it to you, I have it on my phone.
I can address that.
It's very upsetting what I'm hearing here. And the brook isn't just some brook, and there's just some, it feeds the water into Window Pond, always has, we used to skate on there, and there's always been well water. So, it was a trotter track, there were farms there, there was an apple orchard in back, that's why it's called Apple Orchard Meadows. I'm very sure of the area, I've been there. But I don't like the increasing amounts of traffic and the trucks cutting through, everybody cutting through because of Market Basket and because of the train station in Grafton developing in a boom. If you go down to Tufts Medical Veterinary School, you should see the amount of homes and condos, well, they're all trying to get to and from work, and one forty and Route twenty do back up, so you cut right through. That's why I had them do that traffic study, because I was like, this is crazy. So I don't know where we're going and why we're changing the intent and purpose to help out some, you know, nice guy back in the day, and to continue in the same intent and purpose, not morph it into a large business, because that was never it, and this, it was never in nineteen eighty-four that, or prior. It was barns and things such as that, and a family lived in the house. So, that is what I need, and I don't understand why the active license for used cars.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard?
I'd be interested to hear from the appellant as well, if we...
Yes.
Okay, could we hold off on your comments if you don't mind? We're going to give Attorney Ricker a chance here.
I just want to point out that as part of our discussions with the town manager's office, there's been an active used car license that, which allows three vehicles to be parked out front at all times. He really doesn't even do that, he doesn't park them out front at night, and that doesn't happen. This, in conjunction with this process, we were told to, and we have filed, for a new license based on that, which would then be, which is then being advertised as a new license, although it's a continuation of the existing license. So, he has a license, he's had the license since at least two thousand and six when he was there, when he bought, and so there's no new license, there's no intention to increase the cars.
Still three?
There's only three. And respectfully, this is a drawing back of the vehicles that have been actually parked there for these many years. This is a drawing back to the back of the property, towards the commercial property. But there is no new license, this is not a car dealership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Phil Petrowski, and I live at forty-two Orchard Meadow Drive in the Village of Orchard Meadows. I'm chairman of the board there, we've got a hundred and fourteen units.
And I'm Bob Holland, I'm also one of the five board trustee members. We're here to represent the hundred and fourteen homeowners in the area who think the world of this current owner of this property, and we're here to speak in favor.
Across the board, I've talked to many owners, nobody has a problem with it, they think he does a good job with what he was doing before, and with this plan, I think they'll even be more pleased. So nobody, a hundred and fourteen people do not have a problem with his proposal.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think any issues about traffic on Grafton Street or has anything to do with the improvements that are being made at the property at Best Auto. He's been a great neighbor, he helps, we're all fifty-five and older, I know it's hard to imagine that we are over fifty-five. Yeah, but the bottom line, but the bottom line is, he's been very good to any of our folks that are there, whether they're widows, widowers of the family, they have issues, been a very, a great neighbor to have. Keeps, maintains it, and I don't think, I'm worried about the brook that's there because it looks like, I've never seen an issue over there with, you know, leaking cars and whatnot, or the, just want to be positive about it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'm older than him, too.
Which one?
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I move to close the public hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moved.
I think I'd be prepared to move to approve the amendment, but adding a condition about that the parking area to the rear be screened off by a fence and a gate, which I hope would address some of the concerns about the changing nature of the streetscape, and potentially in the future could also aid in making sure that there's no impact to the brook, should the property be paved. So, if the board's...
Yes, please.
So, I move to approve an amendment to a previously approved variance from nineteen eighty-four, as recorded in Book eight five eight two, page twenty-five, to allow for overnight outside storage of vehicles, provided that the overnight parking to the rear of the lot will be screened by a fence and gate. And I vote to, I move to approve waivers to subsections C, D, E, F, G, I, J, K, L, M, N, and O with regard to seven hundred fifty-three Grafton Street, Ruraby District.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to turn the hearing over to Anne.
That's a lot of waivers.
I know. It was. So next up, we have petition to hear the appeal of Jason St. Pierre of two ninety-one Grafton Street, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, for three variances to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section seven, table two, to support creation of a new lot with a frontage length of thirty point nine nine feet, where one hundred feet is required, a lot area, lot area of nine thousand four hundred nineteen square feet, where twelve thousand five hundred square feet is required, and a front yard setback of twenty-one and eight tenths feet, when thirty feet is required on an existing dwelling upon property located at thirty-four A Elma Circle in the Residence B one zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's tax plate, twenty-one plot two oh six zero zero zero. Good evening.
Jason St. Pierre, representing Halino Carvallo. We're back again with property located at thirty-four Elma Circle. This time, we're going to try to do two, split the lots into two single-family variances with numerous variances on each property. Just to give some background again, the two existing structures on the property, the first structure was built at some point in the sixties. Fast forward to nineteen ninety-one, the former owner was granted a special permit for an in-law apartment. My client had recently purchased this property about a year ago in March. At that time, that in-law terminated upon the transfer, the special permits do not run with the land, so at that point, the property from a zoning standpoint is kind of in no man's land, if you will. So, the existing property itself, the in-law was kind of an interesting grant, if you will, back in ninety-one, when it was granted initially, it was only because it was a carport. So that was a distinct feature of the in-law itself, was the attachment was between the two houses, was this carport, not like your typical in-law, so you can't access either property again through the other. Couple of features of the property underneath and why they did it this way was because there's a sewer easement that runs directly underneath that carport, so obviously they couldn't connect it back when they initially put this in-law in nineteen ninety-one. So recently, we had come, I think in June or July, back, heard a lot of the butters comments about, we tried to go for a used variance to change it for a multifamily, or two-family use. Most of the comments were the fact that this was not a two-family zone, they said it's a single-family zone, so what we did was kind of look at this, say, okay, let's look at the property, kind of split the lots off, remove the carport, create two distinct single-family properties at this point. These were all a double lot back on an old plan, like eight thousand square feet, so looking at the property, the parking, we decided just kind of, your in-law at this point is ninety-four, ninety-four hundred nineteen square feet, it's going to be thirty point nine nine frontage, and twenty-one point eight of a front setbacks. The existing initial house, again, six thousand five hundred eighty-one square feet, twenty-two point seven front yard setbacks, and then sixty-five point eight one of a frontage requirement. From a variance standpoint, I think it's clear as far as the hardships go on this property, namely that sewer easement, the fact there's two existing structures on the property, you can't use both of them, you can't connect them. Again, the in-law terminated, so now we're just stuck with what we have. So because of the sewer easement, I feel like that's a clear hardship at this point. Switching this now to just keep them a single-family zone, we feel like it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood at that point. Basically, these properties, I think it's on an old plan, there's about eighty lots, roughly about eight thousand square feet, once that carport comes off, it's going to be in line with every other property in that neighborhood. I drove around today, I think there were some questions about parking and things like that. If you drive around that neighborhood, this actually parking area is going to be in line or even greater than most of the properties, they're pretty consistent as far as either one or two spots. My client's actually going to extend it, so he's probably going to be able to fit, how many cars next?
Six cars.
Six cars in those spots. And with that, I guess we open it up for any... And with that, I guess we open it up for any comments the board may have.
Sure. Is the intention, after splitting these, to still rent both of them, or sell, or what's the, if I may ask?
The one property isn't really disrepair, so it had a major flood.
Right.
It's sitting like that. So, that just need, the first step is to just, you know, once we figure out the zoning, then pulling this building.
Figure out from there, okay. Yeah, I would say, so obviously, we recall you being here last time, thank you for coming back before us. This is a complicated situation, the sewer easement, I think, is really what's driving a lot of the issues here. I'd be inclined, based on the existence of the sewer easement being a very unique situation, the fact that you've got two single-family homes, and based on the character of the neighborhood, where most of the lots are undersized by the current bylaw standards, most of them are eighty by a hundred or so. You know, I think it makes a lot of sense to split this off into two, and then you don't have one home that's not occupied in a town that has a housing crisis.
Exactly.
And I think that's within the spirit of the bylaw. So, I, based on the unique features of this property, particularly the easement, and it being in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, I tend to support all the variances.
Thank you.
I'm inclined to agree, I think this is a great solution. And I was gonna ask about the carport being removed, obviously creating two distinctly separated structures, which is great. You did expand on the parking. I apologize, I wasn't quite paying attention to that, can you describe that again, how that's gonna work?
If you look at the existing, I think you're just gonna extend, expand the pavement more towards the back.
Okay.
Oh, further in, in other words, okay.
So, it won't be creating two distinct driveways, it's going to...
That was the intention of moving the lot line on the in-law over, was now they do have two distinct driveways, based on, instead of just keeping eight thousand square feet, I think going one over farther at ninety-four hundred square feet, then you're gonna have more, that you're gonna not lose that parking area. So, you'd have, I think each would have their own parking.
Okay.
That's one, he owns both lots, obviously, at this point.
Yeah, 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 no, I just wanted to make sure that they were distinct, so when you looked at it from the outside, that they were...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They looked like two separate homes, obviously, it's going to be two separate homes. But in the case you decide to sell one or both, and two different owners came, then they would have their own, and there wouldn't be easements, discussions, disagreements in the future, so. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a tough time getting there. So, the thirty-one feet of frontage is probably the biggest issue, but then, it's accompanied by the next appeal, which will be for sixty-six feet. You know, to go back before this was an in-law, it was two, you're right, it was two eight thousand square foot lots that were, it was, you know, one property by one family, and then the in-law was constructed, and then it was, you know, used as a single-family with, you know, associated family members all residing on the same property, and we're at the point where you're saying, okay, you're gonna want to do, you know, two individual houses. So, you see me looking down, just, you know, continuing to review the plot plan that you have here. You know, I think about things like fire and life safety with a twenty, a thirty-one foot frontage, you know, how our fire apparatus is gonna access the structure, et cetera, which I guess, it's already been there for a long time, so it hasn't been an issue, but, you know, that's one of the many reasons why frontage bylaws exist. So, in that regard, you know, I really have a tough time getting there. I don't even know what other questions I could ask you, to be totally honest. You know, like what other, were there any other, you know, potentially dramatic alternatives considered besides maintaining the two structures as they are?
I think that's the problem with this property, to be honest. I think the fact that the board granted this in-law situation in nineteen ninety-one has then created this issue, because it's just not your typical in-law. And that's what I think I said the last time, like your typical in-law situations, there's gonna be, connect, somehow they're connected. You know, so like I said last time, if you had an in-law where the parents were in the basement, or something like that, now all of a sudden, that in-law terminates, you can still use the basement for something else. In this case, once this was built, there's nothing else we can do with this property. You know, so I think it's a, you know, clear hardship to say, what do you do with it now? You know, so you have these two structures that, you know, they're there, you know what I mean? So, it's been like that since ninety-one, so any of those issues you raised have been like that for thirty-five years, you know, at this point.
Right, and the applicant is not intending to occupy either of the properties?
No.
So, it's an investment property? And we've heard from other applicants this evening that are seeking relief, and it's their owner occupied. So, this makes this a little bit different in that regard, and so, you know, if, investment's a tricky thing, right? Because you invest in something, and its value can go up, and you invest in something, and its value can go down. And that's just the nature of that. I was playing around with this in my head, and I was like, what's the best way to come to a solution that, you know, is most in line with the bylaws, and not thinking about the dollars? It was, you have to choose which one to demolish, or both, and then reform the property and build a new structure that is compliant with the zoning, right?
Through the chair, if I may, I don't know if this is helpful, so, because Mr. Moore, I had the same reaction seeing on the description, the thirty point nine-nine feet. I think there is kind of a unique wrinkle to the streetscape here, that I think it was helpful to me in my thinking on this. So, Elma Circle terminates the actual street, you see it indicated on the marked plan there. Public Way ends. My understanding is, the initial plan for Elma Circle was to have it loop around and connect on Richard Avenue. And so, there is actually, and you can see it indicated, but not super drawn out on the plan, the additional lot there belonging to the Morse's. The street does appear to kind of continue to another house at the end of the street, and you can see indicated on the plan, the town of Shrewsbury has a drain easement. So, even though it says that there's thirty-one feet of frontage, there actually is a full hundred feet of something like frontage on the road there, because that, what should be the street, actually ends up being a driveway to this property here. So, in terms of access for emergency vehicles, you could pull a fire truck right up in front of that house. It's one of those things, I live nearby, and so, walking down this way, it's sort of an interesting wrinkle that Elma Circle's not a circle, it's just a straight line. It's because the plan was to have it loop around, and so, there is something like public way. It's not actually public way, but something like it, that extends, so that there's an individual ninety-four feet basically of road there, that you could get emergency vehicles in front of. So, the thirty-one feet is, it's relief, but it's relief that's not sort of necessary in a practical sense, like you could, there is more frontage than thirty-one feet there. I don't know if that's helpful. I don't know if, I should leave it to the applicant to say any more than that, but I just, as sort of a clarification.
Thank you.
That is a fair point, through the chair. You know, it's just the, yeah, as I started out, it's just tough to get there, because the, you know, sixty-five, sixty-six hundred square feet, and ninety-five hundred square feet, you know, it's not what the bylaws are, and, but, you know, the pre-existing nature of the nineteen sixties house. So, I guess I'm just chasing my own tail here.
Yeah, no, it's a unique situation. I guess I would say the same thing, is it's, it is gonna be completely in line with every other house in that street. Most of those lots are all eight thousand square feet, so you're not changing, you know, not going from sixteen thousand to both the under eight, you know what I mean? It's all kind of in line, every house over there is this very similar.
Okay.
And to your point, if you did demolish both, keep it as one property, anything you build there is gonna be in violation regardless.
Yeah, because the sewer easement, you can't build on top of it, and it's right down the center. So, then you'd be effectively, potentially losing two houses.
What is the, is that a thing that we can know? What is the distance that is constructable from a sewer easement?
I think you can't build on top of it.
Well, I'm certain you can't build on top of it. There is like a ten-foot, a twenty-foot setback.
That I don't know offhand. But I, but I, again, to the measured plan, I think it's the hashed line, sorry about my voice, the hashed line that sort of is following the proposed division of the property line. So, in terms of the building envelope, you'd be basically in the same spot on whichever side you build on. It'd be either the one structure or the other structure that currently exists basically occupies where you'd build a new structure.
It's twenty feet over the center line, so ten feet on each side, wherever it lands on the property, it's not shown in this plan, but there is.
So, assuming, assuming the property line as it's drawn on this plan, you know, you have ten feet on either side.
Sure, we can assume that, it's close enough.
And that's actually roughly, it's, it looks like it's eighteen feet and eleven feet between the houses, so.
So, actually, it's fifteen feet on the backside.
Oh, because it's at an angle?
Yeah, it's not, it's not quite parallel. It's ten feet on one side, goes to twelve foot five at the Elma Circle side, and then on the B side, I think, closest to the center of town, it's fifteen feet, and then comes down to seven-five, so it's not even regularly shaped.
Yeah, it's got like a dog leg to it.
Yeah, a bit of it, so it's wider here than it is here by five feet, but assuming.
I also understand the point regarding an investment property. You know, my understanding is the family lives in town, lives nearby, and again, I, what I keep coming back to is you've got two homes that could be occupied. We need to have a pretty diverse portfolio of housing in Shrewsbury for all the demand here, the prices are very high. Having two homes to rent for some family to come in and be part of our community, as opposed to one, where they already both exist, and it's in keeping with the neighborhood. I understand where you're coming from, and I see what you're saying, but I think I just tend to break the other way on it.
Okay, no further comments.
Thank you. I tend to agree that the proposed solution is the most logical, given all of the constraints here, so without a ton of deliberation, because I think a lot of the points that I was going to make, other people have made, you know, I don't, I think I'm in agreement with the way that this is presented.
Thank you.
Before we open it up to public comment, I forgot to ask Ms. O'Neill if you have anything else. I do not, thank you. Very good. And I will just note for the record that town council has reviewed the materials, and wanted to point out that the existing single-family house was subsequently expanded to include an in-law apartment. Construction of that in-law apartment was permitted by the special permit issued in nineteen ninety-one. And the changes in the character of the subject property, since the date of the Superior Court decision in nineteen ninety are significant, such that the Superior Court decision is not relevant to control or prohibit the concurrent applications for dimensional variances. So, just put that on the record, and at this point, I'll ask if there's anyone who would like to say anything from the public. Yes, could you step to the podium and state your name and address, please?
Could you just repeat the last part? You said that the Supreme Court decision was not valid anymore?
The Superior Court, it was the Worcester Superior Court decision, which was made in nineteen ninety.
Right.
Subsequent to that, there have been changes to the character of the subject property, significant changes, so that the Superior Court decision is not relevant, and doesn't control or prohibit the current applications for dimensional variances. It also goes on to say, while the Superior Court decision is relevant to the history of the efforts by the prior owners to make use of the property, the current facts are different than the facts considered by the court in nineteen ninety. So, we can consider the current applications for the variances on the merits.
All right. When I went to court for that, to start that building of that house, and I won that case, it's because my driveway starts at Daniels Road in Elma Circle, and runs in front of that whole thirty-four A house. He's actually got nine feet of frontage on Elma Circle. That's all it's got, let's see, this is the map. So, that if he wants, he can't use my driveway. That's the only thing I went to court for, because they wanted to use that driveway to make his lot, make that lot more acceptable. I went to court, and they said, you can't do that, that's private property. So, that property that's all in front of thirty-four A is all private property. They've got nine foot of frontage on that street. How do they build a house with nine foot of frontage? And do I have to go to court again? The same thing?
So, through the chair, just a point of order, I'm sorry if I missed it. Could you identify your name and address for the record?
George Morse, thirty-eight Elma Circle.
So, you're the George Morse of this Superior Court decision from Worcester, from the...
I don't know where this map is, but here is the map in nineteen ninety, can I give this to you?
Yes, if you give it to us, we have to keep it, though.
You can, you can show it to us, if it's an original, we can just look at it.
Okay.
Here is my property. That's where that house is. And this is all my property in here. And this is, this is the slot here, here to here, and that's nine feet where my property starts. And this, the other house would be right here. So, if you're gonna get a fire truck, you know, you're gonna come on my driveway, on my private property.
Yeah. So, this is, I think, the piece that I was referencing, and that's, you can't see it super well, maybe, because of how far it is, but the measured drawing shows the end of the public way being thirty feet from the proposed property line. So, I understand what you're saying, that it's, that's where your driveway begins. There's a drain easement, and that's different than it being, it's not a street, it's your driveway, it's still just a drain easement there.
It's a drain, it's my driveway.
Right, exactly. So, I hear what you're saying, that it's not true frontage in the sense that it goes onto your driveway.
It's private property.
I think, though, my, I think where I'm going from, though, is that, let's say this house was on fire. If a fire truck needed to pull up in front of it to put the fire out, you're not gonna say, get off my driveway. You would say, get off my driveway.
Would you go back to the podium? Thanks, just so, it's on record, just so everyone can hear you.
I've been going over this for thirty years. If you want, I mean, if there's no such thing as private property, then you do whatever you want. But that's private property. Almost the whole of that house fronts private property. Where is this frontage? I grant, I don't, I grant with you, this was never, should have been, that house should never have been built, but it just gets worse and worse and worse. Now, he's got a big fence around the back of that house that fits, I mean, it just walks everything off for me. Place is turning into not a very nice place to live anymore. But this thing here, this property, this house, my house starts right there. This is all private property.
Sir, if you're able, sorry, we do need to record it on the microphone. Just so we can hear you on the broadcast, thank you so much. Yeah, thanks. Thank you very much for your input. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard this evening? You could state your name and your address, please.
My name is Paul Dobner, I live at twenty-three Elma Circle, on the other side of the street. So, I think this is a better plan than the previous plan. I'm actually overjoyed at the prospect of having the carport roof torn down. It's plagued us for decades. However, I am concerned about several aspects, some of which have been, well, they may have all been expressed already. One is the frontage on the, what they're calling, what the builder is calling thirty-four A. And the other is the substantially sub-reduced, let's say, reduced square footage on thirty, what they're calling thirty-four B. And the other thing that I would like to mention is that all the lots on Elma Circle are not eight thousand square feet. Practically every lot on the odd-numbered houses is a double lot, and so, they're substantially greater than eight thousand square feet, including my own. So, that's a bit of a distortion. If I had, if there were no other path forward, I would support this plan. And it may be the... And it may be that there is no other path forward. The only other path forward I can think of is to have, is to sell this property to somebody that wants to rent out the other house. And that would also potentially aid in having more residences for Shrewsbury. And so it's a question, it's not a question of, is this the only path forward? In my mind, it's not the only path forward. And it does, this particular path has a number of issues with square footage, frontage, et cetera. I'm not sure, quite sure where the driveways are going to go, but presumably there is enough space to put the driveways in. Anyway, that's, and so I would be more in favor of having somebody purchase the property and have the second house as a rental. But that's just my opinion, I recognize that. But it would solve the square footage issues, it would solve the frontage issues, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So just like to get a sense of where the board is. Because I certainly hear the counter-arguments. I think, to the gentleman's point, that this, you know, this might be a better solution than the prior solution. There might not be a perfect solution. And on that kind of basis, I'm inclined to support it, but I'm interested to hear what fellow members think.
So I think the comment is largely directed at me.
Well, everybody, really.
I know everybody, but the, I'm still not there. For a lot of the reasons that have already been mentioned, as well as, you know, the frontage issue, the lot area issue. You know, I understand the argument for the sewer easement as a hardship, but there are just too many other arguments against, for me, to proceed.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think that this is one of the most unusual properties in Shrewsbury. I think that the carport situation that has persisted for a long time is a difficult, is difficult visually. I think that this proposed solution, which I think has been arrived at after looking at every other possible solution with the sewage easement running in the middle of it, is the best one to stick to the purposes and the intent of the zoning bylaw. I don't think that there, the proposal will create any sort of nuisance. I don't think it will cause any of the other categories that we need to evaluate. I do think that there are unique conditions on this lot that would help us approve the proposals. And I think we have to acknowledge the fact that there is a severe housing crisis and this would create two dwelling units where, which we can't afford to sacrifice, I think, at this point. So I would be in favor of the proposals.
Does the board feel they need more information on the frontage question with the drainage easement? And more time with that? I don't, I don't, can't guarantee more information, obviously, but I can see if there's more to it.
I mean, that's part I wanted to take a sense of the board, because once we close the public hearing, obviously, we're locked in. We've crossed the Rubicon. And so to the extent that folks might prefer to continue to get more information before taking a vote or what have you, I just wanted to have the opportunity to take the sense of the board.
It's a tough situation, given one of the comments and pieces of information that was brought forward. Jarvis seems to be reputable. We've never had an issue with Jarvis before. I don't know if the town has ever had an issue with Jarvis. They do note all of their concrete bounds and iron pipes to denote things. I'm inclined to believe what's here. I hate to say it needs to be settled in the courts, but based on what we have before us, I think...
I just, just not to get into the legal from that previous case, but that wasn't, that was overturned for different reasons as far as not lack of frontage or anything like that. It was more, more it didn't meet the criteria that the court felt for. Because I think that case was totally different in the standpoint, that second lot was a vacant lot. And basically, the court decided that sewer easement really didn't, wasn't a hardship. It was only a hardship on the existing house because you couldn't build onto it or over it. But just because you had a vacant lot, the court said that sewer easement really wasn't a hardship because there was nothing there. Now it's a hardship because you have the two structures that are being built. And that's, that's the difference in that.
Right. And where I'm kind of getting at is I'd hate to then put two property owners in a court battle over something that we've approved based on the information that we have or information that we don't have. But I don't, I don't have a reason not to believe what's been put in front of us, assuming this is true and there is, let's round up to thirty-one feet of frontage. True frontage by the definition of the law, that is enough space to put even just a single car driveway in for access. That's where I'm...
So you're leaning yes, but hating the idea of teeing up a potential?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And just to clarify, the nineteen thirty-nine plan, there were eighty by a hundred lots. This was two lots that was actually combined into one and then the sewer easement was created? And so this...
Sewer easement sixty-three, I think.
Okay, so the problem didn't originally exist and then the sewer easement creates the problem. And then ninety-one, now we have a second house on the property and a carport and this is how we got here?
Exactly.
Okay, yeah.
To answer Ms. O'Neill's question, the introduction of any new information about the drainage easement is almost certainly unlikely to change my disposition. To address other comments about, you know, the housing crisis and housing shortage, whatever you may call it, that is unfortunate and I don't take joy in having a negative disposition of this case.
No, of course not.
You know, I, you know, anybody who wants a home, I want them to be able to have a home. As well as, you know, somebody who buys a property and wants to better the town and invest in it as well as live in it. And the, the barrel that I'm over, to use an expression, is, is it the, as Peter just summarized, we got here through a sequence of essential wrongdoings, you know, well-intentioned, they may have been. They were, you know, they were a bunch of wrongs. And in my opinion, you know, voting to approve your appeal is a continuation. And so it's multiple wrongs don't make a right. And the way to correct this is, for me, I see it as voting against, I'm sorry.
We're doubling down, essentially.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, none, yeah.
I think, given the information that's been presented, I still remain in favor of the proposal. Keep it simple.
Right. All right. Well, in that case, I move to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I get a motion.
Do we do these, do we have to do them separately?
Correct, yep.
Okay. This is a tough one and I think the perfect's the enemy of the good. And I certainly understand where everybody's coming from and know that we're all approaching this in good faith. As Ann said, it's a, this is a weird one. This is an unusual situation. But I think, for me, based on the sewer easement and other things and the existence of the two homes, I think there's enough there to hang a variance on. So I move to approve three variances under Section Seven, Table Two, the support creation of a new lot with a frontage length of thirty point nine-nine feet where one hundred feet is required, lot area nine thousand four hundred nineteen square feet where twelve thousand five hundred square feet is required, and a front yard setback of twenty-one and seven tenths feet when thirty feet is required on an existing dwelling at thirty-four A Elma Circle, Residence B one District.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then similarly, I move to approve three... Oh, right, we have to close the hearing.
And just to confirm the ayes.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm a nay.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have to announce the next.
Correct. So...
Just the same, incidentally.
All right, the next matter will be to hear the appeal of Jason St. Pierre to ninety-one Grafton Street, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, for three variances to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section Seven, Table Two, to create a new lot with frontage length of sixty-five point eight-one feet where one hundred feet is required, lot area of six thousand five hundred and eighty-one square feet where twelve thousand, yeah, twelve thousand five hundred square feet is required, and a front yard setback of twenty-two and seven tenths feet when thirty feet is required on an existing dwelling upon property located at thirty-four B Elma Circle in the Residence B one zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate Twenty-One, Plot Two oh six zero zero zero. The chair recognizes Mr. St. Pierre on behalf of the petitioner. Can we incorporate all the prior testimony of the prior hearing into this matter? I believe that we can.
Okay.
We could do it by motion if we had to.
Okay, why don't we make a motion just to...
I move to incorporate by reference the testimony relating to thirty-four A Elma Circle, Residence B one District, six P M. hearing this evening, March thirty-first, into this public hearing.
I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And can I get a motion?
I think we have to allow public comment.
Okay, do we have any more? Okay, so is there any public comment on this matter?
So I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve three variances under Section Seven, Table Two, to support the creation of a new lot with frontage length of sixty-five point eight-one feet where one hundred feet is required, lot area of six thousand five hundred eighty-one square feet where twelve thousand five hundred square feet is required, and a front yard setback of twenty-two and eight tenths feet where thirty feet is required on an existing dwelling at thirty-four B Elma Circle, Residence B one District.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone's input.
It looks like we have no new business.
Ah, yes, there is no new business, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, let me just finish.